Good evening and welcome to the March 28th meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. This meeting is being recorded. Is there anyone in the audience also recording? Seeing none, your stand is for the flag.
I believe this is a lie of the United States of America. The Republican Party will just say this is a nation under trial for physical liberty and justice.
Script. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen is being operated as a hybrid format under Chapter 22 Acts of 2022. The public can join the meeting remotely by telephone at 1408-650-3123 with access code 235235861. Or the public can join via computer with the link global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. As a preliminary matter, this is Tristan Low Liberty, Chair of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are participating remotely, are present and can hear me. All members are present in person, so I'm going to skip that part. And just as a note, all votes will be taken by roll call. Alright. We have nothing in the public comment. Entertaining a motion to move up agenda item.
It was 6E, please.
6E.
So moved. Second.
A roll call vote, Mr. Ruffly?
Yes.
Mr. Bretham?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Alright. So item 6E is a vote to apply for and accept state grant funds for fire safe amount of $8,230.
Great. Thank you through the chair. Thank you for moving that item up. We have a deputy chief, Glenn Johnson, here with us this evening to explain this grant. This is a grant that we've done in the past, a lot of education and outreach involved, but I'm going to turn to the deputy to better explain it.
Good evening. Each year we receive this grant through the Department of Fire Services. It is for the public education in the schools and then also our senior education at the senior center. Typically, it's based off of population on how much money we get. Anyone have any questions?
Any question? No. It's just, it's my understanding, we don't actually apply for the grant. It's something that we just get every year.
Correct. So it's not like your traditional grant, but I guess we kind of treat it as a grant. And sometimes it's come before you and sometimes it hasn't, so.
So we're voting to receive free money.
Yep, there's no, there's no matching grant, no matching funds to it at all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else, board members? Administration?
No, it's a formula grant. It's not a competitive grant, it's formula. But we still, Department of Revenue still has to vote to accept it.
There are a motion to accept the state grant funds under the safe.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Motion been made a second by a roll call vote, Mr. Ruffly?
Yes.
Mr. Bretham?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, under public hearings and presentations, the public hearing on a motor vehicle license, class two auto repair license. Is there a representative on the call or in the room? I will skip to continued hearing on ARPA.
Through the chair, can I just make a suggestion to still thought?
Sure.
There may be somebody on the call for 5A. Open entertainment.
Mm-hmm.
And we didn't put a time on the ARPA, so you're not required to have that at any time. So I guess my recommendation and request would be that you move that one up because there might be somebody waiting for that. And then maybe also the warrant articles because I know there's a number of department heads who have the warrant articles.
I'll entertain a motion to move up agenda item 5A.
So moved.
Second.
A roll call vote, Mrs. Ruffly?
Yes.
Mr. Bretham?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Is there a representative for Faith Baptist Church for their Easter egg hunt on the call?
Yes. That's, yes, I'm on the call. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. Can anyone else?
Yeah.
Alright, great. Thank you. Welcome. So I'm just going to turn it over to you to give us a little bit of background on what the event is and share your thoughts.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. I apologize that I couldn't be there in person tonight. But yeah, so this is a proposal for an event called Easter for five a week. It was previously known as the Auburn Egg Hunt. It is a family day event at, they call it Lomansky Park. And it's open to the town of Auburn and the surrounding towns. The purpose being a fun family day. There'll be some food trucks. An Easter egg hunt with 20,000 Easter eggs, activities for the whole family. And it's being put on by Faith Church with prayer in Auburn. And we are excited to be able to gather again after, you know, some challenging times with COVID. And our main kind of audience is young families and giving them an event that's free to let them be able to gather together as a family and make some memories.
Great, thank you. Do board members have any questions or comments? Oh, excuse me. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve license?
I'll make the motion to, oh, I'm in the wrong place here. I'll make the motion to approve the outdoor entertainment license. And do we have to take them one at a time or can I just, can I say along with approving the open air license and grant, oh, it just says, and, oh, that's, that's kind of come out though. Okay. So I'll approve the outdoor entertainment license and the open air license. Second.
By roll call vote, Mr. Ruffly?
Yes.
Mr. Bretham?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Is there a motion on the P?
Yeah, I'll also make a motion that we waive the fee on the open air license.
A second.
A roll call vote, Mr. Ruffly?
Yes.
Mr. Bretham?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Alright, thank you very much, Alyssa. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it, everyone.
Alright, I'm going to try it again. At 6:30, we have a public hearing for a motor vehicle class two license. This is for 141, 143 Washington Street. Is there a representative on the call? With that, I'll entertain a motion to move up agenda item 5B.
So moved. Second.
Roll call vote, Mr. Ruffly?
Yes.
Mr. Bretham?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Well, through the chair, while he's getting that item out, so this evening, the board would be going through each agenda item, excuse me, each warrant item and voting to either recommend approval or not recommend, defer to petition or take no position. And just so you know, those who are sponsoring warrant articles, town department heads are here this evening in case there are any additional questions. I know this came before the board when you would just transferred it to town council, but tonight when you're taking positions, if you do have extra questions. And I can see that the actual school superintendent, Ed Chamberlain, is also on the call. So thank you back for doing this and thank you for taking it out of order.
Yep, just point of procedure, I think in the past what we've done is we've taken them all as a group unless somebody has a particular one that they want to pull out. And I'm personally okay with what I see, so you just let me know if that's good to do it that way.
Yeah, I think taking as many without going through and voting on each one, at least in regards to time. Do you members have any questions about any of the articles? I mean, we've seen some of them before, or at least early drafts. Were, are there any questions? I don't.
Through the chair, there's one article that is in here. I apologize, I will get the number that was not in here when you originally transferred it to the town council. It was on, it had a placeholder on it, it just wasn't in the copy that you had. And that is seeking approval from town meeting to enter utility contracts that exceed three years. Right now, we can only go three years, but what we're hearing from some of the utility consultants and providers is we may get a better rate on electrical for the town and the schools if we have the ability to go on a five year as opposed to a 36 month. So we have a consultant that's working with us to solicit various quotes, working closely with Superintendent Chamberlain and the school department. Because our contract that the town and the schools have together expires in June. So we're looking to see if we can get the best rate. And again, it may be that the best rate is in a longer term contract. So that is the only article that you didn't previously see.
I know we don't have to take this vote necessarily tonight if we wanted to hold up until we had a full board to make the recommendations. I don't know if that's what the board wants to do. I think we have done that in the past, but I would hate to make everyone come back again to another meeting. But that's why I asked if there were any questions from any of the board members.
Through the chair, I believe the assistant town manager received questions from the board member who's not here this evening and did get back to him, so I'm going to assume he's all, he's all set. He had sent some, he had called this morning and Ed was able to respond.
Great, thanks. That's what I was trying to, yeah.
If I may, can I just add a couple of comments? I just want to draw your attention, articles 13, 14, 15, and 30. Those articles do appropriate a sum of money. The amount of money has not been determined yet. In terms of 14 and 15, those amounts are received from the Commonwealth of Mass. Historically, that's not known until after town meeting and these warrant articles are held until the fall. Certainly, article 13 is an interest earned on the Auburn High School Gymnasium Trust. That amount should be known in mid-April, so we will have something for town meeting. In article 30, appropriate sum of money from stabilization to address a leaking highway roof. It's a flat roof. This is the question I received from a board member today. That roof is currently under review and it's being assessed by facilities management as well as a engineering firm to determine whether or not the repairs to that roof may trigger any other code requirements. Now, there is money in the CIP earmarked for the replacement of the roof and that starts in FY 2025. We were hoping maybe through some additional repairs, we could, we could wait until then, but I'm being told that the roof may be, may be beyond repairs right now since it's been repaired several times already. So that warrant article may, may be necessary, but we won't know probably for a couple of weeks, Joanna? Yeah.
Are there any questions or comments?
I'll just make a motion that we recommend the articles as presented.
Second.
What's been made to recommend articles 1 through 35, a roll call vote, Mr. Ruffly?
Yes.
Mr. Bretham?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Probably the easiest warrant thing we've ever had.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming in.
Thank you so much and thank you, Superintendent, for being available. I know you have a crazy schedule, so it's much appreciated.
Thank you all for your support. I greatly appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Alright, the next one then? Alright. We have a continued hearing on, should we table the hearing on the class two license or?
Oh, for that?
Yeah.
I would say continue it. Actually, I wouldn't even, because you haven't opened it, right? I would just say, you're right, table it and we can reach out to the applicant tomorrow and find out what might have happened.
Or one more time at the end of our meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you can tell him, yes.
Okay. Hold up until then. So we won't take action on that. Alright, then, M3B, you need an even hearing on ARPA funds to solicit input from residents, businesses, et cetera. I'll hand it over to the town manager for the recommendation.
Great, thank you. So this evening, we wanted to come back to you with some additional ARPA information as we keep learning more about ARPA. And the U.S. Treasury thankfully is providing a lot of good guidance for communities on how to interpret the so-called, I say so-called, but it is called the final rule. But there's been a couple of different updates on the interpretation of the final rule since the final rule was issued in January. So in February, something else was released. And in the last, I'd say, month, Ed, myself and Tom Zedelis have individually and together attended various webinars and conferences on the use of ARPA funds. And something that has come to light under the final rule that we wanted to bring to your attention this evening is a category for classifying the funds under revenue loss, which is a quote, it's one of the uses, revenue loss. So just to give you a real brief background on that, the revenue loss for every community can be calculated in one of two ways. One is to do this entire formula base, which we did at the beginning. The interim rule said you had to do revenue loss at late and every community had to do revenue loss. Our revenue loss was approximately the same amount as the dollar amount separating. So approximately $5 million based on the formula. So Ed and Tom went through the formula, did the revenue loss. The final will change it. You don't have to do that calculation now. You can classify up to $10 million as a, they're calling it a standard allowance. Meaning, communities can go up to $10 million of their ARPA funds, which for us is 100% of our funds, and classify it as revenue loss under the standard allowance category. It's just two things. Number one, it expands the ability to utilize those funds with less regulations. So in other words, here's an example. We had the board commit to 115,500 last time for Camp Gleason. And we only did the overruns on the HVAC and the equipment and the insulation because that was all eligible under a specific ARPA category. Under revenue loss, you could do the entire project, pretty much. I don't think there'd be anything that would be ineligible. Because under revenue loss, it goes for general government spending. There are still categories you have to follow, but something like Camp Gleason would fall under it. So if we were to run short on Camp Gleason again, let's say the costs continue to escalate and that 115 is, now we need 130, we would have the ability to use the ARPA funds under this category called revenue loss. The second thing is the reporting requirements are much, much, much easier. It's not going to be nearly the reporting requirements that you have for the individual. So a lot of communities are looking to just put everything under the revenue loss. And just to be clear, this doesn't mean that town administration now uses all the money, however town administration sees fit. We still come back to the board of selectmen with our recommendations and you would still have to vote to approve it. It's still a grant. So you're still, while you voted to accept the grant, you're still voting on what the uses of that grant would be. So the process doesn't change, but the categorization of those funds changed. And it may give us some more flexibility. And, you know, Ed pointed out earlier to me today, just went through it on a warrant article, the DPW roof, under revenue loss, that roof would likely be 100% eligible. So we could pull it off of the warrant. We wouldn't have to go to the taxpayers for the dollar and we could use it for other funds.
You can pull it off CIP.
Mm-hmm. So we're trying to pull things off of CIP anyway for our recommendations to you because we think that's the best way to save the taxpayer dollars and have them all benefit from this. So we keep going through the CIP to see what we can come off. There were certain warrant articles sometimes, you know, recently before ARPA funds came available, we had that, those ARPA dollars for, excuse me, the warrant article for HVAC improvements at the West Street Fire Station. That would have been eligible. So we're recommending that the board vote to authorize or approve of the use of all of our ARPA funds under the revenue loss category for reporting purposes and for the ability to give us a little more flexibility. We still have to come back into you as we have been and will continue to do with recommendations and then you would still vote those recommendations.
Can we make that a motion right now?
Are there any?
You know, I think that, and certainly for discussion, but, you know, what I'm hearing is we get all our money without restrictions or without as many restrictions. Number two, our paperwork and application process is a lot lower. That's all I need to hear, you know, so.
Cost of administration.
Cost of administration. So, I mean, it's a, to me, a no brainer. So let's just make the motion.
So it's done. Yeah. So the motion is to classify all remaining ARPA funds as revenue loss.
Does that depress my mind?
I believe so. Let me just look.
All remaining, I would say all. Oh, okay, all, so we can do.
I think we can go back because the final rule, and I verified this again today, the final rule goes into effect April 1. So before that, you can use anything under the interim rule, which the only thing we've actually, and I don't even think we've drawn down on it yet, is the AYFS funds.
I don't believe we have.
I don't think we've, I don't think we've drawn down on, on any of the money other than maybe some of that.
The initial part of the AYFS funds for the three years to meet.
That we haven't used that yet either. Oh, but we did draw down on some of the public health funds, but it can still be classified as, as this. So to Ed's point, I wouldn't specify remaining. I would just say all of them. And then even with that category, you could still go back and use specific categories if we had to. But this does make it a lot easier for us.
Before I say, is there any other questions? Okay. And I'll entertain a motion to classify all ARPA funds as revenue laws.
I'll make that motion.
Three seconds.
A second.
A roll call vote, Mr. Ruffly?
Yes.
Mr. Bretham?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
That's great, thank you. And we have no other recommendations this evening. We're still looking, you know, it's always good to look and see what other communities are doing, but most importantly, what is coming up on our CIP. We're still waiting for some information from the state. We're seeing new programs almost coming out on a weekly basis that maybe we have the opportunity to apply for funds and pull some things off of CIP as we go. So we don't, we don't have to rush on these dollars if there's something that comes in. So that's a real critical need. We'll come back to you for a vote, but tonight we don't have anything.
Did we have to vote to reopen that?
It was open. I think you would vote to continue it.
We've been continuing it.
Yeah. You may want to vote to close it only because I don't know when the next time will come back. You can always put it on again as another hearing, but.
Yeah, I think that's probably a good idea.
At this point, yeah, I think. Most communities had, you know, one or two hearings, maybe some had even more.
Yeah, we had kept it open to, yeah, see if there was any more public comment, but we haven't gotten.
We haven't received anything.
Yes, since that first one, so.
But it doesn't mean even if we had public comment, we couldn't bring a public comment to you. It's, that door will never shut.
So we want a motion to close the hearing. I'll make the motion to close the hearing on American Rescue Plan Act funds to source input from business, residents, sorry, residents and businesses on the use of the town's ARPA allocation.
Second.
A roll call vote, Mr. Bretham?
Yes.
Mr. Bretham?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Chair votes yes?
Thank you.
Under communications, none? Vote on recommendation on each, oh, I'm sorry. Discuss and vote to establish process for the Town of Auburn flag may follow to choose a new flag design and the process for the committee appointments. So I had sent out two mockups to everyone's agenda, one for each committee. The board policy for appointments usually requires we bring them in for an interview and ask them the standard questions before they're just few questions. But I thought that might be a bit excessive for these two committees and what their goals were, especially because some of the candidates for these committees are being pulled from other commissions or boards. So part of this is changing the appointment process specifically for these two committees. And just outlining what their responsibilities and goals will be and, you know, some of the duties that they'll, they'll have. I don't know, do we?
I just want to say, you did, I read through that. You did a great job with that. It's, and it's probably something that we can use for other, other committees along the way. So I don't know if we need to vote to adopt that.
Yeah, I think we'd have to vote to adopt both of these. We could probably make it one motion to adopt the procedures and the rules as written for both committees. I didn't know if anyone had any suggestions or alterations that they wanted to suggest before we did something like that. We can also take a pre-cessus if you guys want to read through it a little more. I know you just saw it today. That's, yeah, when I emailed it out.
Through the chair, can I just make one comment? You might want to just add on both of them, I think where it says the appointments per the board of selectmen, the committee was, consists of one member from the select board, one from the Board of Library Trustees and one resident. Technically, under the charter, they all have to be residents. So I think you might just want to call it one at-large resident because the other two are directed or targeted. And I think, I think that was on the, on the flag committee as well. Obviously, Board of Selectmen are all residents and Board of Trustees are all residents, but on the other committee, you were looking for somebody who had graphic arts. So that also does have to be a resident.
Where is that written?
Right here, I would just say, and one member with a background in art and, I would just say, one resident with a background in art or graphic design and two at-large residents or something to that effect, just so everyone understands that you are required to have a, to be a resident.
Did you see your stuff on the back? Did you say you had stuff on the back of yours?
No.
No. I thought you said there was more to it.
Oh, there are just two separate ones.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We got them twice in the packet. I was confused.
Oh, okay.
And just per the charter also, which I think it might be in your initial policy, but per the charter, anyone on a committee has to also be a registered voter.
Does that need to get put as a, as a hashtag here under appointments?
You could put it there. It is under the charter anyway, so it is stated elsewhere. I just figured I should state it to you because if there is interest in that from high school students, it would be great, but they do have to be registered voters. It doesn't mean they couldn't attend the meeting and participate and give input, but just they couldn't be a member if they're not registered voter.
So through the chair, this isn't, or to the chair, this wouldn't be too named. Somebody would have to come and, you know, nominate a building to be named or something. This is.
Right. This has nothing to do with, yeah, changing our policies on naming buildings. And specifically put in the general outline of the community responsibilities for the community to recognize individuals, that it would have to follow the existing town policies. So, right, they'll, they're limited to specifically looking at Berry Square and the Library Project at ways to recognize people outside of duties assigned to the board of selectmen.
Through the chair, just a matter of procedure, I think you're on 5C, which should just be the flag. So maybe just take that one first. That's okay, because I know they're in the same packet.
We can take a motion to take the two together.
I would make that motion with the, with the corrections that the town manager suggested under the appointment section.
The motion to, so is the motion to take, I want to make sure that we got it right. So take, take C and, item C and D together.
5C and 5D together.
To prove them with the.
To establish the process for the Town of Auburn Flag Committee to follow, to choose a new flag design and the process for committee appointments. And also to establish a committee to recognize individuals who have contributed to the town. establish a committee to recognize individuals who have contributed to the Town of Auburn. So it'd be two separate committees. Um, we can do it as two votes or we can do it as one vote.
Through the chair, can I ask one more question before you do? Just to clarify, the board, from your vote, the Board of Trustees is appointing the, I'm on the, uh, I'm on the naming one. Right, it, it just didn't say that in here. You just might want to clarify, because you have one member of the board, one member of the Library Board of Trustees, and then the Board of Selectmen will be appointing the third member, correct?
Yeah, so um.
I mean, someone has to be.
Based on our last meeting.
Yes.
That, that the, uh, you know, it's going to be one Board of Trustees, one Select Board.
Right, so how it's written out is the Select Board will designate their own member, the Library Board of Trustees will designate their member, and then the final member via application submitted to the, you know, the board. The board, so if we want, we can change that to Select Board.
No, that's okay. No, it's in there. Yep, no, I apologize. That, that should do it. Just so when we advertise it, I want to make sure we put it out there, right, who it goes to. Thanks.
Okay, so, yeah.
So that motion is okay then?
Yeah. Uh, and then I'll just ask you to amend the motion to include um.
At-large.
Yeah, to change the language to, Gerald, for the vote of the Select Board on March fourteenth, the committee will consist of one member from the Select Board, one from the Historical Society, one resident with a background in art or graphic design, and two at-large residents of Auburn.
So that's on the flag, and then there's also on the other one, uh, one at-large resident.
Right. It's protection, one, from one resident of Auburn to one at-large resident.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Is there anything else in motion before I take a vote? Send by roll call vote, Mr. Ruffey?
Yes.
Mr. Ruffey?
Yes.
Mr. Renn?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes?
Nice job, Tristan.
Thank you.
Very nice. I will, uh, through the chair, any applications I can. We do have the Flag Committee posted, and the deadline for, applying for that is uh, April eighth. And so on the meeting of the eleventh, we could always let you know. It's too soon to bring people in for interviews at that point, but we'll let you know if we get, if we get any. And then maybe you've wanted, however you're going to do that, you can take a look at them for the next meeting. And then we, this one will get advertised this week. I'll just make that language change and put it out there and we'll put a deadline on it. I think again, under your policy, the board's policy, we have to have vacancies for committees posted for a minimum of two weeks. So we'll put this out for two weeks.
Okay, just while we're on the topic, I just wanted to mention that, so the Historical Society has already, um, approved, decided that we have any here. Servon, so he was already picked out, so it was just giving the applications to the others and they can be designated from the Board of Selectmen.
That'll be a big addition to that board.
All right, moving on. Give the substances. Okay. Um, applications for recognition, we have none. Report on wage theft and tax fraud ordinance, blah, blah. Turn that over to the town manager.
Through the chair, the board several months ago had, had, I think maybe at one or two of the meetings, discussions on wage theft. And at the last meeting, the board had asked for more additional information. What have other communities done? I know we had sent you some things via email that the chair had provided. And then we just went a little further and got some additional information from other communities, because I believe the board's main question was, what are the processes that are open to the board as far as trying to address the issue of wage theft? And at, the bulk of the report just shows you the different processes that different communities took. You know, cities, obviously, a larger city may take one process, a smaller town, an US may take a different process. But when you narrow it all down, it comes down to pretty much five different ways that you can do this. One is a general bylaw, which requires your town meeting approval. That's probably your most uh, permanent type, because then, once it's approved as a general bylaw, you have to go back to town meeting to change that. The second would be to develop a Select Board policy for all public construction contracts, if that's where your focus was. The third would be to do it through a certification form, which you may want to do in conjunction with other things or do it separately. Uh, but a certification form would be asking anyone who enters into a municipal contract to sign off on the certification that they are in compliance with state and federal wage laws. Uh, the fourth would be to amend the current tax increment financing policy that the board approved, to include a requirement to have certain language and/or certifications in every single tax increment financing agreement. And the last way to do it would be, if the board wanted to, you could recommend that the town manager issue an executive order, um, which is basically just, larger communities tend to do that, not so much this size, but it is an option. Uh, an executive order just says, you know, whereby the Town of Auburn acknowledges that wage theft is an issue, uh, Town of Auburn Selectmen wish to address it and ensure that we work with reliable, dependable contractors. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then you, you put everything in the executive order. And we hereby say that moving forward, there will always be a clause in a contract or focusing on tax increment financing. I think the two different things that the board should probably discuss is, who do you want this to apply to? Is it only to those who are getting town contracts or agreements, such as recipients of tax increment financing or special tax assessments? That's a, a certain, that's a company that would enter into an agreement with the town for certain tax, uh, tax financing, tax um, programs. The second part would be for any vendor entering into a contract with the city or town. That's a little more complicated, uh, because that, not worded specifically, generally worded like that, that would mean, uh, you'd have to get agreements from, say, a Staples, if you went to Staples to get a contract. So you're, you're getting into some corporate things where maybe you're not able to change the language in some of the corporate contracts. So many of the communities just focus it on, on those contractors or businesses that are getting direct benefit from the town. The other way to look at it is, of course, everyone who does business with the town is getting a direct benefit, but you're not, you're not giving them money for a specific thing versus a purchase of a good or service. I, I think it's going to be a little more challenging to monitor it if you're just putting it on all goods and services that we purchase.
I um, hate to be the first one to jump in every time, but um, you know, looking at this um, and, and thinking about the contracts that we have going on, uh, the Select Board uh, policy for all public construction contracts, um, I, I think it's very important that, that we, that we do uh, have a Select Board policy that, that does get attached with all uh, public construction contracts. Um, I, I think that uh, we had a constituent actually that was um, said that they had language um, that they could help us with, and maybe we could uh, incorporate some of that to go with this uh, board policy. Uh, they, you know, they're uh, like a labor union representative type of thing. And um, you know, I, I think that would be good to do that. And then have the fallback of uh, number five, um, where, you know, if, if the board, you know, if it's something outside of the construction area, we may need from time to time, some sort of um, uh, executive order. And, and I think we can ask for that at that point. But I think as far as the construction contracts, um, you know, it, it would be beneficial to the town to, to have a standard uh, policy uh, made, uh, made up in reference to um, you know, the, the lost wages and that type of thing. So um, I would recommend, and we can table this because I'm, I'm thinking that Mr. Carpenter will want to have a little feedback on this too. Um, but I would like to focus on uh, number two and number five. I, I don't think we need to go to Staples and have them, you know, give us anything or, you know, all the stores at the Auburn Mall or anybody like that. But um, I, I do, I do see a, a purpose for uh, the policy with the construction.
Um, I'd like to see two and three, I think, the certification, because we know we have a lot on post.
I didn't interrupt your.
Uh, did you want that?
Yeah.
Uh, thank you. The certification, I think if you go along with any tax increment financing, where the, these contractors are receiving the taxpayer benefit, uh, it just adds evidence to the powers that be if they're violating any wage theft bylaws. Um, so disclosure of our town policy or our selectmen policy, along with certifications in those contracts only, I don't think every vendor needs to, you know, um, I think that's fair. So yeah, and then obviously, you, the executive order is the same thing that the policy would do, right?
Hmm.
So I got.
Um, so I'm heavily leaning towards, and then we don't have to take any actions tonight. I, I think we should wait for a full board on this, something like this, because there's a lot to discuss also. Uh, but I'm heavily leaning towards a, a general bylaw. Um, I think that the bylaw can be written in a way that we're not, uh, stating, we're talking about construction contracts. I think we're all in the rhythm. We don't want to open up anything, go up and try to, try to take on a lot. Um, my only concern with it would be um, going over this report, having to hire new staff or devote someone to that permanently, because the public contracts that we get are not that common. We're not a big city that has all of these happening all the time, that I think we could justify having a new position made. So uh, I, I think that we would do, at least what I was leaning towards after reading this, some kind of general bylaw that would task um, either the town manager or, or assistant um, with reviewing the applications when it first comes in and not doing a monthly or bi-weekly check. I think that would be super pointless and, and waste a lot of, a lot of time from um, town administration's perspective. So I think having that check uh, when, when we first get those contracts, uh, and having that written as a bylaw would carry a lot more weight than a policy. Um, so that's, that's where my head's at right now. Um, yeah. Anything else right now from anyone?
I have no disagreement to what either of you said.
Yeah.
We all want something to happen, it's just what's the best.
Right, yeah, that's why I think we, we may need to continue to talk about it, so. With that, um, I'll entertain a motion to um, table the wage theft discussion until our, our next meeting.
So move.
Second.
Roll call vote, Mr. Ruffey?
Yes.
Mr. Ruffey?
Yes.
Mr. Renn?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes? All right, next up, we have Auburn Night at the Wussox. That's Wednesday, June fifteenth, um, and starts at six forty-five. I'll hand it over to the town manager to talk a little bit more about it.
Thank you. Um, Ed Kuznovich and I had the pleasure of meeting with the management of the Worcester Red Sox, uh, probably back in the early fall, quite a bit. And they had approached us and they had a concept for this, uh, reaching out into the communities in central Mass. Obviously, they're very Worcester-centric, but they completely recognize that their fan base is really broader than just the city of Worcester. And they're really trying to make an effort to engage other communities, work with other communities, and see how we could partner on certain things. And while it's not on here, one thing I would mention is, for instance, our Independence Day event, where they're going to be sending their mascot, the Wussox mascot, to the, to the, uh, practice field that day, just to some goodwill, the kids love it, you know, with balloons and things like that. So it's just a nice, it's just a nice feel-good thing to do. But they had also approached us on having this Auburn Night. So as it unfolded, Ed and I talked about it and said, yeah, that, that would be something that would be nice, or something the community could kind of rally around. And what they proposed, and they're doing this now for seventeen communities, Auburn Night would be on June fifteenth. And I would tell you, we just randomly picked that date. We only had to be a date of a game. And we just thought, if we waited till later in July or August, we run into people getting on vacations and it's kind of tough to get people. So we grabbed an earlier date. Uh, so on June fifteenth, Auburn Night will be held at the Worcester Red Sox. The game starts at six forty-five PM. And if tickets are purchased, there's a couple of different things here I want to point out. If you purchase your tickets through this Fevo site, at Fevo, which is an online ticket that's affiliated with the Red Sox, tickets purchased through there do carry an extra so-called surcharge on it. But that five dollar extra over the regular ticket price that you could get if you went to the box office that you could get on their regular site, that five dollars will be donated for every ticket to the Ron Tarantino Junior Charity Fund, which would be phenomenal. Uh, so, but if, if someone didn't want to do that, or, you know, was purchasing for a large family and maybe they didn't, couldn't quite do the five dollars per ticket, there are other options. We want to make sure everybody knew that. But if you do purchase through that website, in addition to the five dollars going there, it's our understanding that the Wussox will also give you a two dollar coupon that you can use for food or beverage or merchandise when you're at the park. So really, it's not, you know, if you use that, it's really a three dollar donation on top that goes to the Tarantino Fund. So if you purchase your tickets through that site, there's two different areas of the field that you'd be in. Uh, one is, you could have the option of the grass, you know, the sitting, and the other was, I think, section three. Uh, let me make sure I have the right section. The simply orthodontics berm, which is the grass berm, or the third base field box, which is field three B, field box seat. So that's for people who purchase. So if a lot of people from Auburn wanted to go, they're reaching out to the sports teams, to uh, different organizations in town. If people purchase through that link, it will be in those sections. So you'd be with other people from Auburn. And they're, the Wussox are working to identify and maybe recognize some Auburn residents. I think they've reached out to the Little League teams and things like that. So, you know, it'd be a nice Auburn Night. If you want to go to the game and you don't want to do that, that purchase with the donation, uh, you, you can still go on their website and purchase tickets that way. And we just want to point out that Wednesdays all through their season, first responders can attend for free. They just have to go and show their credentials and they'll get four tickets. So that's really nice, but it can't be done through that link. That has to go to the box office. So there's different options here, but the whole intent is, you know, if we can get a lot of people from the town to go, it'd be just a really nice night for Auburn. And they're trying to set up some friendly competition, you know, to see which community has more people who go and raise more money for charity. So that's really, in a nutshell, what it's all about. Obviously, we feel really near and dear to the Ronald Tarantino Charitable Fund. You know, for those watching wouldn't know this, but I think everyone does. Officer Tarantino was an Auburn officer when he was killed in the line of duty. And he had previously been on the Leicester Police Department for, I think, eight, eight years prior to that. So it, it's a local charity. They do a lot of good things. They support a lot of families. They support families both in Auburn and outside of other first responders who've experienced tragedies or health issues. They also raise money for scholarships. So it, it, it's a fund that we feel that was appropriate, given that Officer Tarantino was an Auburn officer. We thought that would be an appropriate vehicle for that type of donation.
Great organization.
Did I just say anything, Ed?
No, I, I think you hit all of the points. I think the important piece to remember is, I think if you don't order tickets through that link, you may not necessarily get a seat with all the other Auburnites that chose to go through that site. So there's no guarantee that they can cluster you together.
You left out the part where I recommended we have you throw out the opening pitch, but. I deferred because I, I, I run. That's my sport. I don't do well with things in the air. Uh, any questions or comments?
No. And I defer the pitch to Ed, who's got a way better aim than I'm, and arm than I'm sure I do. I'd probably take somebody else by mistake.
It, it looks like I'm on there right now. It looks like they're playing the Toledo Mud Hens, uh, which is a, a, a very old team.
Yes, they've been around forever.
Yeah, ever since I've been alive, I've heard of the Toledo Mud Hens. So that's kind of cool to, to go to that.
And I have to say, they, they were very nice to meet with. We, they brought in their whole marketing team, and they just are really trying to show the communities in the surrounding towns that they really, they recognize that a lot of their ticket holders and fans come from those towns. So just trying to do something with the towns. We thought it was a nice thing to do.
All right. Moving on, we have a vote to accept and extend twenty-five hundred dollars from, uh, a grant of twenty-five hundred dollars from Home Town Bank to fund the. Bank to fund the Independence Day event.
Yes, this is an easy one. So number one, we're back, we're back in the Independence Day events again this year. It's been a hiatus of two years that we haven't been able to hold it. So our Independence Day event is going to be on June 30th, which is a Thursday evening, with a rain date of Friday, July 1st. And we applied through the charitable grant link for Bank Hometown for $2,500 to fund the concert. They've done it in the past, and we just received a word last week that we were approved for it, and they've dropped the check off to us. So this is just a motion to accept that check.
I'll make a motion that we accept with gratitude and with a letter of thanks to be sent through the chair.
A second.
Do we all call vote? Mr. Breckley?
Yes.
Mr. Breckley?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Table items, we have none. Select for member items, we have none. The minutes from January 10th to 2022. Are there any corrections or omissions? None. I'll accept them as read. Is there anything else from any other member? Can I mention?
No, good. Thanks.
No. I do want to check one last time.
What's on it?
I don't see anyone on the call. That wasn't, you have the town site, but I'll check anyway. Is there anyone on the call for a public hearing on motor vehicle class two license and auto repair license at 141143 Washington Street? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So move. I will call vote. Mr. Breckley?
Yes.
Breckley?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Thank you. Good night, everyone.